We're going to go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Michelle, will you lead us, please?
You.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're here for a special meeting that was originally scheduled solely to address a request from the Upper Canal Valley to fund a park project that will span from the opposite side of the river Montgomery through the town of Smithers. But we did have to add on a couple of additional items that were time sensitive with regard to a broadband funding request that we wanted to get in and a letter that we wanted to get to our department heads with regard to budget requirements. And also, the Fayette County Parks and Recs Board needs to hold a special meeting because of its shortage of staff and of decisions it needs to make. So we had to add all of those things to the agenda. And it looks like we also have a legal session with our, one of our attorneys as well. So getting started. Do we have, oh, there's Mayor Ingram. Morning.
Morning, how are you?
I'm good. I'll bet it was. I'm surprised you made it up here and chose to.
It's clear down there.
Got my Montgomery mousepad. Got to keep a bit of it calm.
Yeah, I was going to do that.
No.
Yeah, our police don't know.
Oh, did? Well, you can't have mine. But he does. All right, well, we have had our county administrator go over our budget numbers with regard to our ability to fund your project and all projects. And I'm afraid to tell you that we have, it looks like right now we're working at a deficit. We have budgeted, looks like a million seventy-one dollars for, is this just, that's our revenues. Never mind, we're a deficit for a budget or a revenue deficit. But of our whole reallocated, which is where we'd have to draw the funds, all of it but a hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-one cents has been allocated. And some of that actually might be, have to go toward a project that we expect the cost to go up on it because of the delay in getting it done and COVID. So at this time, I don't think, at least in my view, and I'll let my colleagues speak, that the commission can afford to contribute that money at this time, but will continue to look for opportunities to do so.
No, I agree with Ms. Taylor. But I did want, is Ms. Cavalier on? Oh, okay. Okay. Are you speaking for her today or are you just here?
Um, so I work in conjunction with the cities and West Virginia State University, so I'm very involved in this project.
Is that Allison Smith?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious about her budget. I looked at both of your budgets and I was just curious, can you answer some of the questions on her budget?
Potentially, yeah. We're all here.
Okay. Okay. On the ARPA money, they've already, Smithers has already spent their ARPA money, is that correct?
I cannot think of that.
As far as I know, we, Mayor Cavalier, just said in the last meeting that they did have that allocated for other needs within the community.
That was done a year or two ago when they got it, is that correct?
Yes.
I just want, I just want to make sure that what I'm looking at on the financials is correct.
And they also cannot use that for the application that they're applying to for EDA because it is also federal money. So ARPA funds do not qualify for that.
Okay. So it's basically used to, correct me if I'm wrong, raises and other stuff within the, your budget in the.
As far as I understood what she said last time, it was community needs, facilities, high school, some staff.
Okay. And I hate to put everybody on the spot, but I like, I look at everybody's budget. Usually I look at, I'm instead here, I look at everybody's budget. Just as a commissioner, I think I should know where everybody stands on their finances, just like I think everybody here should, the county's budget, and see where we stand all the time. So, you know, I seen you have an unassigned amount of about seven hundred thousand dollars, is that correct?
It's all committed.
It's all committed. I'm just curious what, what you commit.
Will you use the broadband?
Okay, so you've already committed to broadband.
Broadband. You remember the December money that we didn't get refunded for? Before the file rule, they said you could refund yourself for the December payment that they cut off, so we did. That was promoted before. There's a few dollars left there. We've already put fifty thousand dollars of that money into the, into this project and thirty-eight thousand from the, so there's some money for this. We're hoping that, and I think on the final rule, we use some of that money to take down some black buildings in town. We got some other things there. There may be a little bit less, maybe a hundred thousand dollars of that money. But we don't have to need to do that thing.
Okay, I would just curious because I was wanting to ask the municipalities for some ARPA funding to go with the county in developing some fiber and broadband and stuff like that. So I guess that's another question, but.
Well, I'm looking right now, Montgomery's going to be into fiber about four, four million.
Did you get any, anywhere on your bridge issue? Because I brought it up with Mitch Carmichael and so did Jeff Proctor on your behalf.
Like whole bridge?
No, to be, no, to be able to run your fiber across the bridge. You see, you haven't heard back.
They did send me, they did send me because of Jeff.
Right.
They did send me the application and process, I'll do that.
Okay, yeah, he had sent an email and then I had a meeting on our behalf with him, like probably the following day. And I brought it up as well because I don't think Mitch knew about it, but Kelly Workman did. And so, will you keep me posted, like if you don't get the help you need on it, so I can follow up?
Sure. Yeah, I, I'm aware of that saying, I know, you know, we had the other big issue down was only paying half the bridge. You know, and I said, wouldn't pay half the bridge Charleston, so why are we paying the flash line? I do believe that Matt Cavalier gave some food going down the coast of Montreux who's now telling me if they're going to think of the bridge, which was an additional six hundred thousand to finish the paint job.
Which half?
The top half. They don't want to hang it up to what they call the flash line, which is seven feet above the height. And if you go across it right now, look one side, it's hanging seven feet, that's as far as everyone goes. And this didn't make good sense to me. They're up there with thirteen million dollars and it's pretty low, paying it half worth. So we may have.
Makes all the sense in the world, I mean, as a government.
I, I'm like a suggestion, you know, we don't, we don't have the funds now. We've obligated, just like you've obligated a lot of your funds and prior to us, I was wanting the commission to send a letter to ask them for smart funding for this fiber. But you've committed your funding, we've committed funding, so it cuts us tight, but, and I'm, I'm not trying to put you two commissioners on the spot, but if come next budget year, you come to us, maybe we could do something then and we can budget that money if something, yeah, you know what I'm saying, instead of, you know.
And frankly, these projects that, that I mentioned that are tapping us out right now were commitments made years ago.
Yeah.
I mean, they had, we didn't make these commitments. These are commitments prior to commission made and we're just, now we're having to deal with it because somebody dropped the ball and it's late in getting done and now the price has gone up, of course, and, you know, it's, it's had delay after delay after delay. It's Metta River Trail, in case anybody's wanting to know.
The money that they, they outpaid for us, so every year they go back in pot. And just as he said last night, you know, when they have a lot of money and they walk away from it, you know, well, it's a lot, nobody ever paid it. And then all of a sudden it comes to life, somebody brings light and you just say, and then it pops up. So I think the way they do is they walk for one year, you don't use, in one year, you're back in, you know. But yeah.
Hopefully there's no breach of contract issue. I'm sure they looked it up, though. I mean, they can only obligate us for a year technically for the government.
Yeah, I don't know.
We'll have to ask Anthony about that policy because of the sounds of it.
Like Allison said, one of them was from 2015.
Yeah.
That, that we had to honor.
Wasn't it Montgomery?
No.
No, it wasn't Montgomery.
No.
Wasn't it Smithers either, so.
You can't push it off a little bit more. I mean, the easy part about putting in money now is you put in a dollar, you get back four.
Yep, so.
Well, the one I would have stood behind for New Haven PSD was basically just a loan, but, but they accidentally repaid the entirety of their loan instead of an installment and, and got alarmed and so we gave that back to them. But that's a minor amount of money, that was just twenty-two thousand dollars. You know, everything else was Metta River Trail and things associated with it. Well, and an investment we made to try to get it moving and fix it, so we aren't out more money doing it, but.
Plus, there's going to be a lot of money thrown toward West Virginia, government-wise, from feds and from state. So just, we're, we're watching it every day. We're making sure that we're staying on top of everything that's mentioned. So, I mean, I know that.
Well, I appreciate you taking time to look at it and all that.
Yeah.
As you know, Tom, last time Kanawha County wasn't in position to help when you guys were, so I mean, it's just the way, it's just the way it is and we'll be back.
We might be able to help you with, with a letter of support or even, you know, request of the governor's tourism office because they have a lot of funds and they're looking for projects.
Anything to help them do.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll commit to reach out to them, or we'll even send a letter to back it up, but to, to Tourism Secretary, because she's been working with us on Wolf Creek.
Can you send me the letter from the county commission just in support of this project?
Yeah, that would be fantastic. And if we can list Fayette County as a partner on the application, who's in support of the project, that would be fantastic. And we did reach out to the tourism office about.
We have it.
Partner, but they have not responded, so it's, I think.
Yeah, I mean, if you offer a resolution, just write a letter for the project.
We have one right here.
All right.
Got a quick draw.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so I move that we approve this letter in support of the Upper Canal Valley Park project. Any discussion? You'll third?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll do that and I will make that call to her because I've been, we've been in a dialogue all this, with her on Wolf Creek Park, so. What I'll probably do is talk to her and tell her about it and then see if I can put y'all in touch with her to briefly forgive her a presentation like you did us, because I think it's a.
She is familiar with the project, she's been known as with some statistics in our narrative, but it's also not good enough to work, so that would be a great help.
Okay, well, I will let her know. All right, so. We can't move on, Ruth is making a copy. I guess we can. Vouchers and invoices. Well, let's wait till she gets back. Second half payroll, I move we approve.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's supposed to be moving to approve.
Yeah, I can move to approve, I sure can.
You're president.
Okay.
I'm a, I'm a commissioner.
All right.
I just think other people didn't. So prior meeting minutes, I don't have those ready, but I'll have them on Thursday first. Turns out I was short a couple that I didn't think I was. Then we'll. A special meeting, so let's go ahead and hear from Diane on the Parks Board request. Good morning. That's all right, girl.
So as you guys know, we approved five new board members at the last commission meeting. I have been acting as chair, but that is from no official vote on our board. Forum prior to these five new board members. So we are requesting a special meeting this week in order to post official elections on our board and to assign our new board.
Be safe, y'all.
Hey, thank you.
We're, we're asking a special meeting to post an actual election to have our chair by chair and to assign these new board members to committees, we have four committees. And we're asking that we don't have to have a mission to, to have five on the.
Okay, well, I, I'm fine with all of that. I move we approve the request of the chair of the Parks Board as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. There you go. Ruth, we're, we didn't do the vouchers and invoices. Waited, is there anything?
I didn't have any questions, but you usually listen up.
Yeah, those we just like had to get done before the next meeting, most likely, so.
Okay. All right. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
No. Was there anything noticeable, Ruth? Okay. Then I'll motion to approve the vouchers and invoices of player vendors.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're on to, let's. We're on to Gabe's matter, gig ready broadband commitment.
Coming down what?
I didn't even see Amy this morning.
Yeah, I'll go.
Okay, well, in the meantime, let's move on to the letter to elected officials and department heads about the budget preparations. Did you guys have a chance to review that? I know John didn't mention it.
Yes, fine.
Yes, okay.
I really liked it, to be honest with you, and want me to talk to you about it. I mean, I thought it was exactly what I've been.
My only question is you have, like, do you want to send it to like that shelter or to the town as well?
Yes.
So we'll change it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, anybody we fund should.
Sorry, Amy.
Yeah. Outside agencies, be a different one for outside departments, is that what you're saying?
I would just add them.
Add it to it.
And John wants to make sure when you send out the budget sheets that they understand that it's the usual, like, like a little tiny check was this and other, you know,
They're going to get their budget sheets with this.
Yeah. He just wants to make sure they know they're two separate.
Well, and they have to turn all of them in, so if it doesn't highlight them, they will.
When you ask me questions, we'll have, shouldn't have to ask questions.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I like about it, is questions, if I ask questions, everybody takes the person.
I like that, thinking positive.
And, and for the public's information, the purpose of the letter is, the commission is requesting of anyone, whether it's county or the animal shelter, that we fund to identify its outside sources of income and how those funds are allocated. So the public and the commission can have an overall picture of where money, public money is going. This will help inform our priorities and our strategy for spending the ARPA money and any other funds that, that become available. Different offices have different sources of income from many different things, so we're just trying to figure out big picture stuff so we can make informed decisions. So with, with the addition of sending it to the animal shelter, I'm going to need, since I drafted the letter, one of you to move to approve, please.
I motion to approve.
You moved to approve the.
Oh, second.
I'm sorry, I'll speak up again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When I was working this week, I got sweaty and they shorted out.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
They're not supposed to do that.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Morning, Gabe.
Morning.
You ready?
Ready, so.
Okay, you're ready.
So you have in front of you the resolution for the gig ready technical assistance program. It does take into account the preferred route of the county commission for implementation of the proposed project. Again, technical assistance, it's not construction, just sending this to the state to get some assistance on planning this implementation project. What's listed here, the twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars, sorry, million, twenty-two million, hundred thousand, forty-four dollars. That is the project again for fiber, aerial fiber deployed through, we don't have the, the map in front of you right now, oh, you might, I think you do have that.
I got the little piece of paper.
You don't have a map, that's a first.
It's in my car, I'm going to get it if you want.
I'm just kidding. It's best in your chops.
Based on Thompson and Litten mapping and the cost estimates and the, the match, what have I said, match, five point six million. It's a soft, a soft remedy. This does not commit to county commission. It's more so if we're able to move forward with the implementation, we can discuss where that matching comes from. John Tuggle and Amanda Smart are on the line also, and I think they might be three questions that you might have about this whole process, about the implementation, about the technical assistance.
I forgot my phone and I sent Abby a couple of questions, so I have to pull another one here.
But yeah, but for us to move forward with the technical assistance application, the resolution and the verification of ARPA funding is required for us to move forward. This grant through the thirty-first, so having these two documents will give us a position to be able to submit that grant before the deadline. But again, I just wanted to reiterate that the twenty-five percent match, it's not set in stone, it's like you, and we can identify through the technical assistance ways to generate that, whether it be through the service provider or through partnerships with municipalities, however we want to go about it, but it's not a firm commitment.
Hold on.
No, can we talk for a minute while you're looking for that?
Go ahead, yeah.
And I've mentioned a couple of times about requesting some funding from the municipalities. I also talked to Gabe this morning, even requesting funding and partnership from the school board, Fayette County School Board, because I know they got a large amount of money. And we talked about kids not having broadband in their households and stuff like that. When this thing comes about, I was wanting to go ahead and ask the municipality, I'd like the county commission to ask municipalities and school board if they would commit to any funding for this project. And I don't know how the other two commissioners feel about it, but I wanted to mention again today, after we get this letter sent out, ask the municipalities if they would have any funding available for a partnership on this project, maybe even to extend it to the outreaches of, of other households.
I think it would be awesome if you guys could draft a letter to that effect and have it ready for us for thirty-first.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Mayor would like to say something.
Yes, sir.
I saw this on the, yeah. And we are working ourselves in the town of Anson on a gig ready proposal. I have seen the proposal that you have out here, so I don't know how it relates, but our cost, based upon the year, it was one point two million. And basically, our match would be three hundred thousand from the town of Anson. I'm willing to commit, we've got one more payment coming of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, I'm willing to put up a hundred and fifty of that, I think the other hundred when I saw it on here, I, I just needed to know what your proposal was and how it involved us, because we would like to move forward with our own. And I know Montgomery is also working on the same bike thing with a proposal.
Did they put gig ready in too? You know, okay, so here, here's, here's what I learned when I, I met with, so after the broadband discussion we had that you attended, I met on our behalf and commissioners from Nicholas and Raleigh County met with Mitch Carmichael two days later about this and saying that the five counties wanted to cooperate and asked them like what we needed to do to get their attention, you know, and they were very excited, enthusiastic about the fact, and told them the municipalities were involved as well. They encouraged us all, so you did the right thing, they encouraged us all to submit our individual gig ready applications. And then they were going to look at them as a whole and kind of, and get some of their people on it to figure out, you know, how to scope out some of these, these projects and, and fund it. But they were so enthusiastic about it, I mean, I told them, and that's when we told them, you know, we don't have any infrastructure on the other side of the bridge, almost all the way to Somersville, you know, and, and he didn't know that, you know, and it didn't hurt that Rodney LaRose was in that meeting for another reason and, and he, he spoke up and said, that's true, you know, but, but to let them know that, you know, as we know, nobody, including his office, wants to invest in something that's not, you know, shovel ready or site ready. So I think what we need to do is just submit these individual things and, and see what they come up with for us and then gather again and figure out which ones to fund and, you know, which parts of it or how much of it we can, we can find.
So you're not making a hard commitment, you're making a soft commitment, just like we're talking.
Yeah, it's basically one point two was the number that they gave for, and basically it covers both sides of US sixteen, goes up into what we call a hop up.
Ours covers all sixty, ours covers all sixty from Kanawha County all the way to Greenbrier County, and ours covers from Nicholas County all the way to Raleigh County. And we took in some other routes, but I don't think any of them comes off sixty in the Anstap. So that would probably.
Ours does go up into.
Saying that's where this, that's where, after we get all this together, we can piece this together and overlap and maybe the county, some of your funds will end up for.
And also part of my strategy with the, you know, we're still working, still hoping to get funding for the sewer problem. So if we have fiber in Anson, when we go to lay sewer pipe out, out the road, just at Burke Road, and we aren't having to get in, you know, sixty, it's just as easy for us when we install a sewer line, that we put a conduit in there and run the fiber.
Right.
And then when we come to the house, we have hose available. So that's, and that's long-term strategy for me, is to have it there and be able to expand to those areas Jeff Proctor loved, totally be a part of the sewer.
Oh, yes.
So, but our problem is, I don't have three hundred thousand dollars I can commit, and the council has three commits for that.
Sounds like part of, but it sounds like part of what you would, what you would have to pay is actually something that we've already calculated into our project. So it sounds like that's quite likely, we'll be able to help you with that. I mean, to me.
In other words, money can be used even for.
Right, especially for the Route sixty, you know, the Route sixty leg of it.
Yeah, he said, yeah, no matter what, you can commit to a hundred and fifty, that's what you're saying, you've already committed a hundred and fifty.
My council agreed that, right, that if we were to find the additional one fifty, three hundred would be there for that.
Be nice if we had every municipality willing to do that.
I think if everybody pitches in, you can get a broader span of households and everything if all of us pitch in, I think we can do that. I mean, I've said from the day one, the more funding sources we have together, the more areas we can cover.
We, we do it, you know, critical of our area.
And we do too, I mean, you're. And we do too, I mean, you're, that's a next serious threat area for us.
Am I gonna sit in my lifetime? Probably not.
We hope so.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Same way with sewer project, I think it's gonna be, I don't know, but I hope so.
Well, we're definitely getting the ball rolling at a minimum, so we can take some solace in that, I guess. But I, I mean, it's my view, we're not in a position to commit, to actually commit money other than to our gig ready, because that's all we noticed on here. But, I mean, I can tell you that, you know, that area is a priority for us, that was one of our top priorities. It's on our list of things that, that's within the scope of our gig ready application, at least the Route sixty piece of it. So I really feel like between us, we would be able to work that out. I mean, what are your thoughts?
Yeah.
John?
Yep.
Same, so, um, I mean, you should submit it. Yeah.
There's no way that, they won't, they won't work in conflict if each other's reading it, will they? Because they just come back and then we can.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, when they come back and, and what we'll do is, is once we get our applications in, I can get in touch with Kelly Workman and, and just let her know, look, you know, we've talked with the mayor of Anstead and he was involved in our, you know, our meeting on this. And, you know, they had, we have Route sixty covered in both proposals, so there's some overlap there and that sort of thing. So we're gonna be partnering to get with each other on that.
Our first budget expansion, yeah, so, but I just, you know, when they came to do this, this was talent answer, I said, well, it all boils down to eventually, I believe, half the batch, but.
I mean, compared to what we're investing in broadband, I think that's a nominal amount, so, um, I, I don't know why we wouldn't be able to, because that's a high priority for us, is Route sixty.
Absolutely.
We identified that to the legislature a few weeks ago as a priority. So whatever money's coming in, whether it's just ARPA, but we have other, you know, we have expectations that we might get other allocations from the state and if Build Back Better or something like it ever gets past that as well. We're just trying to get our, ourselves in the, under the noses of the people making those decisions to make sure they know that we're working on it and ready to, you know, ready to go. So back to, back to this, um, this letter, Abby, are you on there? Know this letter that Abby sent yesterday.
She's muted.
I'm here.
There she is. Now, how come it still has, if it's something for us to spend, how come it still has all these brackets and, and italicies in it?
Because the individual organization would fill those in. It's stating that they support your initiative for this grant application. So for example, it would be the town of Anstead supports Fayette County's gig ready application.
Okay, well, that was my, that was my question, because you said it would come, I guess, I didn't ask it very well, but I was trying to figure out who was going to submit these letters to, to somebody. So who are, what sort of organizations are we supposed to seek support from?
It's the, the committee members who would serve on the technical assistance program, form a broadband committee. And then these people, we're, we're sending letters to those folks that were asking to be on the committee. And so that's just a letter of commitment saying that they'll be on Fayette County's broadband committee moving forward.
Well, this, but this is a letter of support that I'm looking at. Do you know what I'm, I'm talking about?
I mean, yeah, it's, it's a template, uh, and, and they can say specifically, we'll support this by serving on your broadband committee.
Is that necessary to turn in the application or can those go in after in support of it? Because we have short time turnaround.
I feel like we can get that back, uh, pretty quick turnaround and it'll, it'll reflect well on the application.
Okay, so the, the individuals on that list or the entities on the list that you guys recommended were, um, I mean, I added NRG, RDA, but Region Four.
What about the school board?
Yeah.
Well, that's a good idea.
Proctor.
Yeah, Proctor says much.
Jeff Proctor, yeah, he, and he recommended, I hadn't seen this email yet, because it's on my phone, but having representatives from the business, outdoor, recreation, medical and education sector, so probably health department would be a good way to go.
Well, yeah.
For that.
I'm sure Abby saved notes, but we'll, we'll get these out, we'll, if you all think of anybody before it comes to this, we'll, we'll get those out today.
We'll reach out to the big, reach out to Rick Johnson and, and, and the, you know, rafting companies and, and climbing, I would say Waterston, maybe. You guys, can you guys think of anybody, you know what, what about the Chamber of Commerce?
Okay, sure.
Maybe just reach out to Becky instead of those individual businesses and then get a couple of the bigger, um, companies one across the river and maybe Ace over here, so we can cover some geography. Any other ideas, anybody? Letters of support?
Hospital.
Yeah, well, I was, yeah, I was thinking the health department could speak on behalf, you know, because all of you guys on the COVID task force on and stuff, that they might be able to, to speak for them. Board of Ed, can you think of anybody else, Michelle?
No, other than you'd probably want to try to reach out to, this is for a long Route sixty in, uh, major league, then you'd want to try to reach something, um, on there, like Avengers on the gorge or specifically, or, I'm trying to think of, I mean, send this thing, this is for Fayette County, and once again, all our letters come from Oak Hill. It's a, I know it's. It may be specific.
We will definitely try to find people who have a foot in both words.
Yeah.
So that we can get it, uh, well-informed committee.
Okay. Well, I did ask Abby to make a couple of changes to the letter. Did you guys see what those were?
Yes, I did.
Um, one of them was she had put FaceTime as an example of, of something that people would access and she said she had access to email. And I had her change it to video teleconferencing, because FaceTime is a.
That's what you're talking about, your email.
Is a phone specific.
Yeah.
And, um, I also asked her to add, like, not only are we trying to accommodate visitors, but we're trying to accommodate and, and retain our, our residents, the people who live here and the people we'd like to, the displaced people who had to leave because of the economic decline. So, um, I had her add those two things to it, so.
Sorry, what about telecommunications people, thinking like, um?
Oh, you know, Boy Scouts.
Yeah. Like some, like we've got, uh, Darren McGuffin has that new network, that blue, you know, thing, network that he's running, playing all the local basketball games on, through Facebook.
That's true, and maybe even, um, the, you know, the river and those guys. Like everybody pretty much benefits.
Yeah, I just think it would benefit.
It's hard to narrow it down. You get where we're coming from, right? You might be able to even get some support from the media on that, WAY probably could use higher speeds over there, but.
You can use a lot of things.
All right, so what all do we need to approve this resolution and, and then the letter?
Correct.
Okay. So let me just read the resolution.
Resolution looks good to me.
I haven't wrote it. I was, got lost under something on my stuff.
Is this the current?
Yeah.
That is, that is the current, I guess.
Okay. We submit this, I want to put a cover letter on it, um, to bring their attention to the fact that, you know, they should take a look at Mayor Primors and Mayor Ingram's applications. And, yeah, all those other five, the other four counties, um, that, you know, these are the applications that they were expecting to receive from us. Guys cool with that too?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, I put stuff out there, but I've, left them in isolation here. Since I'm signing, will one of you make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's the resolution, um, the letter. I like the letter with the edits, I move that we approve that.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that should be it. Now we need to go into executive session.
One, one more question that, that, uh, Amanda Smart, John Tuggle asked, um, uh, heard if I'm wrong, John, um, RFP for ISP's came back, um, and I think they, they got some decent responses, but the question was, do we anticipate re-advertising once the technical assistance, uh, assuming the technical assistance is, is awarded to the county commission, so though we'll go through the process again instead of going in with the RFP, the service providers who responded to the initial RFP, um, I'm not, I'm not sure if it makes sense, like.
What's your suggestion, in my opinion, what's, what's your suggestion?
Yeah, what did he suggest?
Well, I, I don't know, yeah. But I understand what you're saying, I just like.
Yeah, I, I don't understand why we would do another RFP, but I'm curious to hear John's perspective.
Uh, the only reason that question came up is, you know, uh, Gabe, Gabe mentioned it to us, uh, I mean, currently, you know, we only received sitting net and there is one issue to, and it's, uh, nice that you're a lawyer, commissioner, but, uh, the RFPs that have been sent out the whole time we've been doing this was a, he had a letter of intent that was, uh, required in the beginning and then they could provide the real proposal, uh, at the due date. Chantel got to us late and said, you know, they didn't get their letter of intent in, but they'd like to send in a proposal. So I don't, I don't know procurement wise whether that's, uh, kosher. So that would be the reason to rethink, uh, opening it up again, because Chantel has, uh, to this point, has not really applied for any of our areas, but this particular area, they have a pretty good presence and they, I think they're willing to take a look at it, uh, as, as a potential ISP in Fayette County.
I think they might be a little worried about competition. Uh, issue, the real issue there?
I would say so.
Yeah.
Well, we did get another one from SNS, um, this morning, and I think, isn't the close of the RFP, close of business today?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so the rest, listen, if Chantel wants to get one in by close of business today, I think that's fine, but it's not fair to the others if we change the deadline. I don't think we're, I don't think we're permitted to do that.
Correct.
At least in federal government procurement, we weren't.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we are in state either, it wouldn't be fair, why does, if there's, if we're going to be soft on the deadline, we'd have to be soft for everybody.
I'll tell you what I feel about it, they should have been at the ballgame a long time ago. They won't be late.
I would just let them know they have until, you know, close of business today. I'd say anything that's dated today, um, postmarked today, we'd probably be willing to consider, but otherwise. And that's if the law, if that complies with the law, I don't, I don't know exactly what the law says, but if it says, you know, if it allows.
We normally consider that deadline a hard deadline, if it's after that, then, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, deadline wise, I agree, I'm just saying what time of day on the twenty-first are we working with? And I don't know what the, you know, what the code says or whatever, like if it's the postmark rule or, you know, if it's postmarked the twenty-first, is that considered submitted? Because we don't have it yet, um, that's something we'll have to find out, but, you know, they can at least get it out to you today, then, you know, they'll be in the game, if not.
If there wasn't a specified time, as long as it's postmarked before midnight.
Really?
The specified time is, is two PM today.
Oh, so we did specify time, okay, so that's it, that answers the question.
Yep.
Yeah, no, so.
So then we'll articulate in the application that we issued a RFP, we have submissions and we'll work from there and take that into consideration whenever we put together our committee and start looking at the project implementation.
And definitely do that, and you might want to mention too, like, you know, that Region Four or Region One, like all those other counties have also put in RFPs and, and done that work. So everybody's kind of, you know, we're all making moves.
Right.
To get this done.
Right.
In Downfield.
Mm-hmm, Anstett's already, and Montgomery's already hired, hired somebody. So those are, that's progress within the county and, and the goal is interconnectivity, so make sure they understand that it's the broad, you know, we're trying to accommodate everybody, like we have to have it to get it to them.
Thank you, Gabe.
That it?
That it, is it for me?
Okay, sweet. So, uh, Mr. Callahan's here, and we need to go into executive session to give an update on our legal and enforcement strategy in, uh, one of the cases we have on the environmental.
Still recovering.
Um, so.
We're chasing coming over.
Yeah, thanks for coming over.
We appreciate all that you're doing for them.
Chris, thanks for you coming over too.
Um, let's, um, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session.
One second, what time?
Um, it is nine forty-seven and we are going to take a ten-minute break before executive session starts. Okay, it's ten thirty, we're back on the record. We got an update on, um, our environmental cleanup case from our attorney. Um, there were no decisions made in executive session. And I did note, there is one thing we did not vote on that we should have, um, with regard to the Knaugh Valley Strategic Initiative Council. We did vote to approve the support letter, but we did not vote with regard to the funding request. So, um, I move that we deny the funding request at this time.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that ought to do it. Motion adjourned?
Second.
Okay.
I'm quick, John, I gotta get out.